Special meeting, we have some town business to accomplish and some pre-election discussions to have with the town moderator. Going to start the meeting off, we're going to approve some minutes left from our previous meetings. So, Justin, you want to help me out? Start with first, I can make a motion, we accept the Riddler minutes of September first. As written.
My second?
Any discussion on those?
Nope.
Present for you.
No discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve the non-voting minutes of September first, two thousand twenty-two as written.
I'll second those, and any discussion?
Nope.
I just want to say they were well done by Lee and I. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll make a motion to approve the that morning board of suck minutes for the special personal workshop for August eighteenth.
Mike?
Yes. Hello?
Okay, I got your back, you can call up for a minute.
Okay, I'm making a motion, the motion is on the table to accept the board of suck minutes for the special personal workshop August eighteenth at two P M. I'd like to make a motion to approve them as amended.
I second.
Any discussion on those?
Nope.
I just want to point out there are still some action items which are pending, although before we incorporate all those changes to the personnel plan. And I reviewed some of those with Lee, we're still waiting on some wording changes that you, you also were interested, David, regarding the wording on some of the paragraphs.
I don't know if they have any, a date to
No.
That effectively on the
No. So we're just going to wait until we get the proper wording before we implement those all those changes, okay? Dave, you happy with that?
Yeah, yeah, because we respect the municipal association and records lab.
Correct, and Lee's, that's a work in progress with Lee Stone. Lee, that's good. Okay, I'm opening up for public comment. April?
Nope.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the board. And John, Johnny here, the town moderator, he's, this is the principal reason why we're having this special meeting tonight, and John, you have the floor.
Yep, thank you. Again, just wanted to touch base with the gentleman again before this coming Tuesday's primary. Linda and I had gotten together a couple of weeks before the end of August, again, just to kind of scope out what the day would look like. Again, we, the supervisors of the checklist happen to be here that particular day. So again, I'm just discussing with them how they weren't, you know, I'm a good, I'm a good one for not recreating the wheel. We always want to set up just like we did last town meeting, so you agree, let's do it with the shields and all that stuff. So, I asked Woody again to bring all that material up, so that we'll more or less can set up, remember somewhat, like we had last March.
Okay.
We've been in contact with Shelley at the school, we're going to have the run of the, the community center at starting at four o'clock. Woody's on board with that as well. Correct. Yep. So again, your assistance would be appreciated.
Okay.
With that, Linda and I
My name is Paul John.
Yes, yes, David. Linda and I, Jennifer also did some training at the City of Manchester that was put on by the state regarding election law training. Pretty informative. One interesting thing is again, is the need to, you know, recognize overvotes and undervotes. So it's, it's going to be a little
Challenging.
Little challenging, yeah. I think again, once we get into it, we've, we've reached out to Fred, and getting Fred's put together the tally sheets. I think he's got a good handle on it, but he asked me what, what, how I could use his assistance, I says during the tally. He's the tally master.
It's quite for years, I was there until about eight twenty during the session, and it was pretty confusing to me and myself, and just coming into it this year.
I understand that Linda's already reached out to the Secretary of State, and they basically said, we have no guidance at this time, except do it.
Yeah.
This was legislated, and I don't know how you're going to do it, but you have to do it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it was a very frustrating response.
Yeah. So we're going to do our best. I think we find that some are pretty confusing, again, in my mind, it kind of comes back to my decision, what was the pollers' intent. I think the overvotes are simple, if yours are vote for four, and you voted for six, it's an overvote. And they get only overvote for four.
Right.
So it's kind of
It's a big mind boggling.
Yeah.
It's something else, we should recruit as many ballot counters seasoned preferably as we can, because I just learned of another new snag of the Town Clerk Association, has a Facebook page just for town clerks. And there was a brand new post on there yesterday, it seems that one of the election groups has put the word out to their followers, write in as many, even if, if John Doe is a candidate, don't fill in the block with John Doe. Write his name in the write-in section, so that your ballot has to be hand counted. So, that affects the machine count towns, but for people who don't know that, that they're going to affect us like doubly by writing in a name. So those ballots are all going to require extra attention.
Yeah. And I think, I think you ladies would agree, what may have seemed like a lot of the discussion that night in Manchester was the ballot counting, you know, the machine counts. Now, just on my way here from work, again, and P I mentioned there were, was this court case available yesterday, and
Yes.
Something tomorrow, and what's going on inside?
Towns have been, you know, they've been sort of, something about they destroyed their tapes too early, got part of it.
Yeah, so it's
The freezes are all there, yeah.
They are.
I heard they were recommending that town moderators, everyone gets a copy of the tapes, those questions you can answer from your home without being called in.
Yeah.
Right, fortunately, we don't get with the tapes, the good thing about the machines is, they'll spit out all the handwritten ones. But where we have to scrutinize every one as we sort them.
So they'll be all up on the
Extra tally.
A lot of extra tally. So we're going to blow the budget on this election.
Well, hopefully it'll be a learning experience, since it's the primary, so hopefully it'll be less than normal.
And I think, in my opinion, I don't think we have as many crazies in this town as
But they
It's my opinion.
How long have you lived here? You, you, you hear the metal elections, it's not that they're crazies, it's just that they, they listen to the wrong info, they, they listen to the information from the wrong sources. And they're not informed.
Yeah.
If somebody come in and he wants to know how he can be a poll watcher. And I said, I wanted to make sure he knew what he wanted to do, I said, what is, you're trying to do? Oh, I want to watch to make sure there's no shenanigans. Well, if he never volunteered at any of the le- elections, he would see just how straight and narrow we are.
Yeah.
So I am inviting him to come and and volunteer.
So I think that, that was the big takeaway that I had gotten from that session, and, and again, trying to hone, hone up on you know, again, there's going to be hiccups.
Absolutely.
I think fortunately though, too, with it being a primary, I don't, we may not get a ticket to turn off.
This might be a good practice one November.
This might be a good time for me to tell you how many absentee ballots have been out already.
Yeah, I found out that you can't pre, pre, screen, pre-process absentees.
Correct, that was a COVID thing, and that is no longer allowed. I have issued forty-four absentee ballots to date, that is a lot for a primary.
The rule is you got to wait two hours before you can process them.
Correct, we cannot process them before nine o'clock. So I've got twenty-five of those back, but we do have a higher than usual issuance of absentee ballots for a primary.
I'd like to say, if you haven't, anyone, fellow selectmen too, if you haven't, you want to have some updated election law stuff, the webinars are easy to get into, and they work, and they're pretty straightforward, and easy to follow.
Yeah.
So they're online now.
I just emailed those.
Yeah.
And Mike's already
I've seen two of them already that have taken to me, electionarium and the gentleman.
Right.
Yeah.
There's one specific to ballot clerks, I, I think that everyone should watch all of them, even if it's not your job. It's good for you to know what the others need to do, you can give direction, you can refer them to the moderator if they have questions, you'll have a better handle. Like, I know what all of your jobs are. And it would just be good if all the election officials just knew, you know, a little bit, it would help us to help each other out more.
And I understand we have Polaroid cameras this time.
We have them for years.
But I don't remember being, they were just emphasizing those so much this year.
Because of the new requirements when you register a vote, if you don't have, if you can't prove
Who you are.
Something, we have to take your picture. There's a whole big new law on that, that I was trying to brush up on today, but I've got the camera, and I've got the film.
Okay, well
I think, again, unfortunate thing, we're in our small town, I think Linda knows a lot of the people.
I think among, just among the staff.
Yeah.
Well
Involved for
I think the new, has this one taken effect yet, I can't remember the effective date, but it used to be when they would go to get a ballot. If they forgot their I D, the ballot clerks would call me or the moderator. Now the ballot clerks is effective now, have to send them to the supervisors of the checklist. There, there's some
Twists.
Small changes, but there are changes that everybody should be aware of.
Okay, so four o'clock, we're on?
Four o'clock on Monday.
Woody's got proof, he's going to be approving.
Yeah.
And you've got them for three hours essentially, really, more time if you need it, but I'd say three hours.
Yeah.
Setup will probably follow a similar program as we did before.
Correct.
I saw that, I just read the thing about electionarium, how it, in Mr. Parkland, I don't know how far you want to go, but the other thing that I think in the past, we made sure that the, the handicap parts, lots then have cars with signs, and I'm all plastered with signs into the handicap, which are just adjacent to the entry.
Yeah.
And I think as I just read that, I got reassured that if a car is not drivable, there's a plaster, there's placards over the windshields, where you can't see out of them, they can be told to remove them.
Yeah.
And so there's some good interpretations on the video on that.
Yeah.
But I don't think we really had many trouble with that in the past, except that I think we had had moved cars, they put them in the park in the handicap spots, which we could keep the handicaps.
They're supposed to be pretty well marked, it's not so much of a problem in the summertime, when there's no snow on the ground, but the snow, you know, it could cover the section that's painted on the asphalt.
And the other thing was, I, we were really strict in the past on electionarians first, wearing perfennia. We have to use judgment this year, because if they can't take off the shirt, like if a young lady has a T-shirt on, you can't have her take off the shirt and appropriately to go vote. And they were even talking about using ponchos, you know, but I'm seeing, I think just common sense true rule here, as well as we follow the guidelines of the state.
Correct.
Yeah. So.
There was, a question came up as to whether or not guns are allowed in the polling place, because it's a school, is there a conflict there? I just got this question this afternoon.
Hey, that came up at that training, and even though it's a school, it's still allowed in a polling place, because it's a polling place. And it's not designated as a school at that moment, they have it's not released, but it's changed to a polling place, as opposed to a school.
Okay.
Because I, that question came up there.
Is that, I thought I had heard it somewhere before.
It did, I, I thought they were assuming that the school would be closed that day though, given that question.
That course, that part of the school is closed.
That part of the school, that's good enough.
Yeah. And, and they said that, the legal guy there had spoke to that, and said it was allowed there, because the gentleman in front of me that day, the older gentleman, I'd asked that question about guns and weapons and stuff like that, and he said that was allowed.
You, you know, I feel that, you looked at the moderators, you're the judge, when it comes to anything questionable, whether we notice
Um, he's, yeah, he's the king.
And then
Yeah.
Correct. You're the adjudicator.
Correct.
Yep.
May we borrow your gavel for that?
I mean, I'm like
Absolutely.
He said he's on a company meeting.
Yeah, yeah, in fact, we should probably get to it later, yeah. Yeah, problem.
Okay. And then again, all three of you gentlemen will be there.
I'll be present in the morning, and then my dad's going to fill in as
Okay.
So you're going to be there part of the day?
Yeah, in the morning, I don't know when I'm I don't know when I'm going to check in for surgery, the exact time, but, so I might be there in the morning, and like, so my dad will step in, and I know, you said your wife is going to step in at some time.
And, and, yeah, and she made me also, yeah, she's been contacted by the
Supervisor of the checklist, Jennifer already made her a name tag, Sharon's got a name tag.
Right, well, I mean, as a supervisor of the checklist, does she need a different tag?
She, she made me, a second, she made me fill in two positions that day, for a couple hours.
I don't know about the other position, who arranged that without asking?
Yeah, just that Justin was considering appointing her as a selectman pro town.
Okay.
Well, he, that, he, it's like she could fill in for my father as selectman pro town.
Okay, just because we do the name tags, and we, you know, it's good for, I pretty much schedule everybody, so it's good for me to know who's filling in for who, to make sure there are no holes anywhere. So, okay, we'll just work on it for Sharon as an, as
Selectman pro town. Just in case, I mean, I told my father he's going to be there most of the afternoon, and I think he
Jennifer made him the tag.
I was going to say, but I think he's prepared to be there most of the day, and
So it's just in case.
Yeah, because he knows, he knows he's going to have to sign the tag for me, and if I'm not back, I'll know.
I, the reason I need to know is that the name tags and the appointment papers, as many as I can get made up ahead of time.
Makes it easier to swear you.
Right, then all we need are signatures and not so many filling up blanks.
Okay.
Well, this is Dave, he must have lost it all.
Hello?
So Sharon is a selectman pro town.
Potentially.
I don't know, four, three, nine, two.
We don't use it with Sharon.
Sure. I'm going back.
Talk.
Okay.
Does, oh, where can call them?
Call them in.
I'm going to try six oh three. Any line?
Yeah.
Second, seven. Four, three, nine, two. I dislike what the, what the telephone numbers down to was.
It's taken.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
And as far as ballots go, we've got eleven hundred and two ballots, four hundred Democrats, seven hundred and two Republican. Jennifer and I have already counted those, and we sealed them in the box.
You want to keep one in reserve in case we're going to miss a box?
If we have to Xerox it, we have to do them in color, so
I think you did, I think we did it without color last night.
Did we?
Yeah.
Because these are pink and blue. Well, if we're right out, we go to the absentee ballots, that's whatever we have left over for absentees, and we still have a fair amount of those.
I seem to recall I had one election, like, the last time we were running out of ballots.
And that happens.
One of the statistics, uh, one of the, I know that you shared it with me, and I actually, it's in my other book, and again, you know how you had done it yearly, or historically?
Yes.
Primary, do you recall with the, the historically with the primary?
Oh, the percent?
Yeah.
Turnout?
Yeah.
I don't recall the number, other than it was low.
Yeah, okay, that was my recollection too.
I can go ahead and cover that for the selectmen if you want to see, just, it's just something I did years ago. Every election, I'll put, you know, how many registered voters, how many new ones, how many came in and cast a ballot, and I end it with what the percentage of the turnout was. It's just a lot of fluffy little statistical encounter information, but
Interesting.
Over time, it really did come in handy, you know, and put a reason if there's a low turnout, oh, we had a snowstorm, or, you know, we
No snow though.
No snow. Is it good, right?
Yeah, a little bit light, nothing heavy.
Okay, what are we missing, anyone else?
Nope.
Jennifer's going to come over, she's going to work with me in the afternoon, because I'm still training her on motor vehicle stuff.
Yeah.
But then, before or so, she's going to meet you folks at the school. I'm going to kind of give her a little condensed version of some things that she can do as far as posting the signs.
Yeah.
And she can just watch and see how things get set up. I have to be here until five o'clock, by law, for any last minute absentee ballots. And as soon as five o'clock hits, I'm going to come down to the school, you know, and then just help close it up, and make sure everything's as it should be, so that in the morning when we start, we're pretty much done.
Unfortunately, I have to be back to work by seven o'clock on Monday for a public hearing, so.
When are we going to go, Monday?
Yeah. Monday after, Monday afternoon.
Seven P M, you mean?
Seven P M.
Yeah, oh my god.
Well, once I'm over there, I mean
Yeah, I know, and
You can go.
Thank you.
The thing is, Woody knocks it out.
Exactly.
He, in fact, he sees it, in fact, he's training two new people, so it's good.
I asked the town manager to probably be at the end of the, the night. He's going to be so tired. What do you think, John, yeah, this is what, yeah?
That's good with me.
So I'm here.
Okay. I think we'll have, I think we'll have great election.
All right, I think so too.
Support you any way we can.
Yeah.
I, I view it as a team, a teamwork issue, and I think as we work together to support each other.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you know what? This, this over, under ballot stuff, you know, what
I think we'll get through it.
Yeah. I think so too.
And masks, people are going to ask for masks, they're optional to wear.
Correct.
We'll have them, we'll have them there for people who want them.
And he had sanitized his stuff again.
Yeah.
We'll have all that supplied.
Good.
Yep. Because again, all that COVID requirements went away.
Right. It's all voluntary now.
Correct. Yeah, okay, and that's why I think again, the supervisors of the checklist, they were the first, perfect people to ask, they wanted it.
Well, I think we have, we have the, the thing is, I think the example that Lynn issued with me, if you can see this spittle on her window.
Yeah.
Uh, just that, you know, why be, anyone has to be exposed all day, who's sitting there all day collecting ballots?
Yeah.
And so it's, it's that, to me, it's, if we have the first class to use it.
Yeah.
Doesn't really
Might as well one, we can still see through.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. Okay, John, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
David, I meant to ask, any questions, last question, David?
I think you got to answer the wall.
Okay. Hey?
Do you need some help?
Uh, no, you know, I'm
Nice to meet you.
Yeah.
You don't have to take a big box if you don't want to.
No, I, I don't want to go home. Okay. I'm going to move right along, David, just so we don't mind, we have a request from Godhill subdivision, Godhill, recent subdivision, Godhill Road. There's a, there's an issue of contention here, as I reviewed it, Lee pointed out to me, and the thing is, and Donna kind of pointed out to me. In the past, they wanted, at the recent subdivision meeting, they, they came to an improvement, there was going to be a dedicated ten-foot strip of land, uh, ten-foot strip of land dedicated to the town, that's like transferred to the town by deed. However, the plan calls for a easement, which is kind of like contrary to what was decided at the subdivision at the meeting when they approved the subdivision. So I figured, I'd like to send this back to the planning board, at least back to Donna for clarification, and have her review the minutes, and then maybe we can maybe approve it next week, but I'm going to table this for now until we get further information.
Yeah, I'm on board with that.
I'm going to agree with that as well, it shouldn't be an easement, that should be dedication, but
And Liam gave an example of previous, where we're approving small strips of land to be dedicated to the town, so it proves, it eliminates any cloudiness.
I would think that the, because the way that typically has to go, I think if we check with the municipal association, I do believe that they still would have to accept that land, even though it goes through the planning board.
True, that, we have to accept it, but what I'm saying is, it's not for approval for us, but I'm deferring any vote on it until the language is changed from easement to dedication.
Yeah, it was written up by their attorney as an easement, and I believe, we believe it should be as a dedication, but we want to double check, Donna, double check what was
Approved at the planning board session when the subdivision was approved.
Yeah, and she's on vacation this week, so when she comes back next week, we want to have a look into that.
She, she can send some emails to the board members and just see what's, what's going on with that. Okay?
The other thing is, if they did make a mistake and call it an easement by accident when they did their deliberations, they should have an additional meeting to correct that, because it should be a dedication.
Correct, there's, there was one coming up this month, so they can make corrections if needed. Okay, so that's tabled. Next item is the, I have a financial report, the M S five thirty-five, this is for tax setting purposes, this is information we have the full edge of the state, you know, so they can make the appropriate tax valuations. I'm going to leave, talk to this quickly.
Hey, Dave, you received it in the email, I attached it for you.
Did I find all kinds of errors already?
Well, this financial statement is based on the two thousand twenty-one financial audit, and what they do is they gather, they document what was voted on, and they gather the actual expenses from our reports that are submitted that they work with, and
Even though it's labeled as two thousand twenty-two M S five thirty-five, it's for the
I asked that question as well, they, this is the period that we are reporting it, so we have to label it in the year that we're submitting it to the state. But the numbers are based for period ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and you can see that it's right below the two thousand twenty-two M S five thirty-five, it says for the period ending December thirty-first.
Okay, I'm good with the numbers then.
Okay, and then I did want to point out just a couple of things, because I asked the questions, and I wanted to be prepared to answer any questions you may have. If you turn page eight at the very bottom, second to the last line, account two five three zero, the unassigned fund balance, you see that? Okay, our first starting balance was nine hundred and three thousand eight thirty-five, ending balance was one million fifty-four six forty-five. Those are numbers based on December thirty-first, and actual funds that are allowed or available to use, and obviously, in March of two thousand twenty-two, the board applied a warrant number four, three hundred and six thousand from surplus, and number six, two hundred and sixty-nine nine seventy-seven. So you can see how they're reporting what was year ending December thirty-first, but we have spent down some, most of that money, so the true balance, if we were to look at any potential tax rate reduction or applying any additional surplus, there really only is four hundred and seventy-eight six eighty-eight remaining of that one million fifty-four.
I'm on page eight, I'm not following you.
Fifty, that's a
I'm sorry, I was just, um, you're too far, sorry.
At the very bottom, unassigned fund surplus, that's usually the number that the board has the option of either applying to with a budget, applying to tax rate reduction, in the past, boards have done that, they would wait until October when you're setting the tax rate to use that money. It's only recent, in the last five or more years, that the board has used it as a tool, at the time that people are voting on the budget, to let them know that we are seeing increases, but we also have this money that we want to apply to it to keep the tax rate burden down.
In other words, some of that money, we, we use to pay for
Article four and six.
Four and six on the warrant.
Okay. And then, I want another thing that I asked the auditor, because again, this is completed for, by them for us, on our behalf, so that we know that the numbers that we're using are accurate. On the last page, page nine, there, it showed a difference of one sixty-five nine sixty-seven, and I asked him what that was, because I had not seen that in the past, and he said that the D R A does not use that number, that's only for Gatsby purposes, and what the difference is, the D R A doesn't use it for tax rate purposes. The difference is, the nine million three hundred seven fifty-five, which is the commitment, that's the tax warrant commitment, and that is the total for the school, the state, the county, and the town. So basically, when we run a tax warrant from the town, we're dividing sections of that nine million to these other pieces, but that's what we need to collect for property taxes. For auditing purposes, they do not include liens, and typically, that a dollar amount will range in that area of about fifty, sixty thousand dollars for liens or taxes not paid, but we will normally collect them in the following year, January and February. And then the other pieces that comprise that are abatements, which would, in the case of two thousand twenty-one, we use ninety-six thousand of it for the utility appeal. And then we also include the overlay that the board approves at tax rate setting, and it's been running around fifty thousand dollars. And there's also a little piece of that, that is the war service credits. So when they calculate the, the tax rate, they will give you the whole number that's required to raise and appropriate. They, we give back the credit, and in two thousand twenty-one, it was sixty-three thousand four sixty-five, but after that is completely set, we add the sixty-three thousand four sixty-five back in, so it gets dispersed amongst the taxpayers, so that we can raise the nine million three hundred thousand dollars.
Get this straight, that one sixty-five represents a, it's a combination of all those things?
Combination of all those pieces.
Okay.
But the D R A does not use it, I just asked what comprises that difference, that
So they use the nine one three
And that's for Gatsby reporting.
They use the nine one three four to set
The tax rate, that's correct. Any questions, Dave?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I do have a final copy here. Um, I gave everyone a, a draft copy, but the, it does need to be signed by the board. I have a form here, so I'm gonna ask the board to sign it, so I can upload it to the Department of Revenue, so we can be one step closer to setting our tax rate.
I think our signature will signify a. So you can submit with two signatures then?
Yep.
She has a, her clean copy.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next item. Um, Sergeant Verma, wants us to sign, uh, he has got a grant proposal, but this is for a crime line grant. My thing is, um, they want, they, they've got a reward is fifteen hundred dollars, establish a bicycle patrol room in Dunbar. I guess the bicycles are gonna replace our cruisers, what's the story with that? No cruiser, again, we use a bicycle, what do you think, Dave, what, can we do that?
They did do it last year too, I believe, Mike, they did the, um, bicycle grant, and they allowed them to go into Klock State Park and do some, uh, monitoring down there with bicycle where you can't actually get with a cruiser.
Okay. Again, I, I have no issues with that, uh, any downfalls with that?
I ruined my kibble pond in a bunch of different areas there, so.
Okay. But it's not gonna supplant the, uh, or replace the, uh, cruiser, huh?
I don't think so.
Wishful thinking, I, I, I'd live by a deluxe model if that was the case.
So the chief is looking for a motion on this, because, um, there is no paperwork that will be recorded in the minutes, and he needs to file that with the, uh, Concord Regional Crime Line.
Now, uh, I make him, then the grant's been, we received the grant, so I make.
No, we haven't received it yet, but we are.
Okay.
It's been approved to receive it.
Motion to accept it.
I second the motion to accept it, that is.
Fifteen hundred dollars?
Fifteen, the amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, well, gee, hundred.
Any discussion on this? Dave, any further input on this one? Are you here or not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was second here doing it, so.
Okay. All right, um, yeah, next item, we'll move right along. Um, it's not time again, uh, we're getting ready, Liam is preparing paperwork to do, uh, plot placement grant for our, our milfoil, uh, control. And we're gonna hear from them when they come in during budget season. But right now, we just wanna get, uh, get, get this started, I don't think there's any action done by the board, but just an FYI.
You do have to sign it, um, and this is the pre-application, so when we put them to the pool to get, uh, awarded grants.
Okay.
Milfoil treatment.
I'm looking for my signature, Mark.
Right in the top, right on the line, go.
Right for the files, okay. Just May, come on.
Yep, just one.
You're out the hang.
Yeah, it's nice. All right, Liam, that goes back to you.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Dave, we get copies, I think you get copies of it, um, but the, we got new drawings for the, uh, for the, uh, fire update, for the electrical, and for the, uh, library slash town hall additions. Did you see those?
I did, and you're talking about, um, just the envelope, the drawings showing the underground going to the building?
Correct.
Yeah, I reviewed that, and it was nice, uh, in talking, in talking with the, um, electrical contractor on site, um, he provided us with a credit, because he was gonna have to redo the overheads for Chaco anyway. New four hundred and fifty amp service, and he gave us that two thousand dollar credit.
Hold on, Dave, where, I, hold that thought, hold that thought, I'm talking more of the, uh, external.
Architect.
Architectural drawings for the, underneath the, getting the wires, and for the, uh, for the fire suppression.
I am too.
Okay. I'll, I'll let you continue then.
Did you hear the, did you hear the pricing that I sent to O'Reilly?
That's correct, that's under the electrical quote for new lighting on the second floor.
Right, that's, yes.
I think you're confused, that's not lighting from the second floor.
No, that's correct. Um, what I'm talking about is the fire pump service.
Oh, the electrical is for the new drawings, to service the new drawings?
Oh, you're six thousand dollars, right, you're looking at?
Uh, get, get your phone.
To fire.
For the fire pump, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, listen to me, just so we're all quit, uh, square away. This bill is for the underground pipes, or from the existing pole to the existing building. Instead of overhead, had to put the pipes underground so that they would be fire protected. Now we have the building caught fire on the outside, the fire pump would not stop working.
As you explained last, bit last meeting, correct.
So the, um, electrician is gonna provide five, um, pockets underneath the ground. You can see that size is three inch, four inch, three inch, two inch. So he's putting all the ones for the, um, the telephone in for the, uh, fiber optic in there as well.
Okay.
Um, and he's putting in the new service for us, for the fire pump, it's all the new service for the other one, all underground. Jeff is scheduled to dig it on Monday.
Okay.
And bring sand up for backfill. They scheduled, uh, they just got this information, um, this morning, I, the pipes that were needed from that resource.
Okay.
Um, so he reacted very fast, I'm happy with that, because I told you I'm having a special meeting, and I want to get it approved. Um, so what was nice about it is, he had already planned to provide a new wire overhead for the four hundred and fifty amp service coming down into the, um, building.
Gotcha.
So that's where you see the two thousand dollar credit he's listed there.
Okay, I see it now.
Hey, so then, um, we're, we're required to pay the balance of that bill there on there.
Okay.
And that is just to bring it to the building. There will be another bill to have him wire up from the inside of the building.
The panel.
Yeah, to the panel, the fire pump room, and to put the panel in there and wire all that, that will be separate. And I told him I would meet him on site next Monday or Tuesday, to talk about how many rooms of the pipe work. Put that on a separate quote as well, so I hope to see two more calls from him.
Okay.
So just for clarity, this is a work order change, and the quote, uh, the electrician reviewed the engineered plans for the recommended changes, and that was, his quote was based on the engineer's drawings, new drawings.
Go underground with the electrical lines.
Okay.
Okay, you, you broke up, just say it again, please.
Um, so that's go underground with the electrical lines as required by the state fire marshal for our building.
Okay.
Fire pump.
Justin, any questions? Uh, are we consensus, do we have to have a vote on this, or consensus? Let's make a vote to accept the, the bid for four thousand dollars to, for installation of the, uh, conduits with strings for billion service, electrical service, and for the fire pump.
My second.
I'll abstain, just I'm not there, and.
All in discussion on this, I have no issues with this, Dave, because he did give us two thousand dollar credit, which is fine. Uh, and I.
It's a hard work contest anyway, as far as, uh.
Yeah, we knew this was coming.
Exactly.
Yeah, we have to pay for the fire pump portion of it anyway, so.
Correct. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And if you, Dave, if you can share with the, uh.
Is there a signature on that?
No.
Option on the electrical quote?
Uh.
It wasn't the one, I think.
Yeah, you wanna sign it, get it all skinned, Tom.
Okay.
The other nice thing is, um, I did talk with Mr. Chacoine this morning, and asked if he had any problem with the town paying that direct to the electrical contractor, so we didn't have to pay his additional fee on that, and he said it was perfectly fine.
Okay, it saves a few dollars.
Yeah, I think it was one ten, a lean or five percent, something like that.
Yeah, that's usually the service.
I think it was ten, eleven percent, um, a lot of.
That saves, uh, that's four hundred dollars right there. And Dave, you talking about dumpsters?
Nope, not anymore since the last one.
All right, thank you, that was a little bit of humor, yeah, just, uh, for the board, we like humor, sometimes you have to, thank you, Lee. Thank you, Dave, that's good, I needed some clarity there.
So, um, I'm hoping, uh, by next week's meeting, we'll have the, um, balance to wire up that, um, fire pump board, and to bring the wire in the building there, 'cause that's a fireproof wire that should be pretty expensive, and then to do light on the second floor option, which we can take or leave.
Right, the option, the, that's the other quote we have is, uh, lighting on the second floor.
We haven't got that yet.
Correct, that's, that's, uh, working on that, that's correct. All right.
When we can take or leave, or have a different electrician do what we want, I just figured while we have electrician on site, we may as well at least get an estimate from.
Right, if it sounds off, off the scale, we can look at it elsewhere if we need to. Okay. Uh, that closes the town business for, uh, town business, so we got mailbox items now.
Uh, Liam, I just wanted to make sure that that money come out of our.
Building maintenance?
Yeah.
Yep, that's where it will get posted.
Dave, we still have money there, but everything is, uh, not much. No, we don't want any, uh, major storms in town.
Yeah.
All right, we have something from, um, uh, an update survey of Bella Book property, this is from Holden Engineering, Conservation Commission.
That came from the chairman of the conservation.
Okay, I have not read this, so I think it's.
Hey Liam?
Yes.
Could you, uh, email me those?
Uh, sure, I can, yep.
The reason was, I did have a review call me, uh, right after Labor Day weekend, and, um, they were, they were down there next to the, the owner to the, um, cell phone project down there.
Yeah, it must be the, um, Charles Moore, two eighteen, great fine.
That's right.
He did get one letter directly to him, so there were two letters, and I could forward them both to you.
Yeah, I feel good, 'cause, um, he told me that it looked like they, they took what he considered part of his property, he was very, and I would like to look into it.
Yeah.
I told him I would reach out to Brett, and, uh, Scott said when I would get back to him, but I haven't had.
Yeah.
Chance, 'cause I haven't dealt that well.
According to this, the, the letter, it sounds like they may have resolved the problem.
Oh, good.
But I will forward those to you.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay. I wanna read this again.
I can forward it all to all of you.
Yeah, I don't wanna be getting nervous right now, or make a decision or anything like that, I think Justin wants to read it on through.
Yeah, this, yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, I'll forward it to all of you.
And, uh, we'll leave it for the special the next week, okay?
Sure.
Storm making a snap decision, this, all right, also in the mailbox, we have a, um, uh.
Letter from the city administrator to the owners.
Yeah, I don't know, some mailboxes.
Yeah.
What do we have in the mailboxes?
It's not in the mailbox?
It is.
Yeah, there it is.
This was sent, or it was sent?
Um, they, oh, my understanding is the post office visited the Gaihul Road, they were not, they were concerned about the condition and the fact that it wasn't dirt, and that there was, it was steep, and where the, um, carriers don't typically have all-wheel drive or four-wheel drive. Uh, they informed, um, the town offices that they would not be mailing, uh, approaching any of those driveways, so that they would have to continue to, um, bunk all their mailboxes together at the beginning of the road. So just giving them a heads up.
That's the intention.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
Yeah, that was one of the biggest things about the, at the planning board and all the people on the, on the Gaihul, they wanted, the mailboxes to be moved up near all the properties, and when that subdivision was approved, the, the property owner, or the developer, said all of his developments, he was able to get, you know, grant mailboxes, and he was gonna go to the, the USPS and try and get them to deliver right to the property addresses, but this was obviously their, um, rebuttal to that, that they've gone out there themselves, gone up the road, seen that they raised too steep, and concerned during winter conditions, and it's not viable for them to have the mailboxes by their properties.
It's gonna maintain status quo.
Yeah, they need to do that, and Jeff has made a larger section down, um, by grapevine, so they can pull further off the road, 'cause that was one, another one of the problems, um, they didn't have sufficient, um, area to pull off the road, maintain safety down, checking their mail.
So be an improvement of safety, but no, no delivery to them to the.
Correct, they'll all be down at the end of the road by grapevine still, but they'll be further off the road, Jeff is widening that part.
I did see an invoice for work done on Gaihul, so that must have been a minimal cost, but it was just recent, to address that.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to the last item, we have a thank you note, um, uh, Judy, for some of this, uh, we, obviously there was something, maybe a donation on behalf of the town, or asking of her mom.
Yep.
And, uh, she's a very small thank.
All right, what happened?
We, we received a thank you letter from Judy Ben-Calkin for the donation to the, um, charity for the loss of her mom.
Oh, okay.
She just wanted to thank the.
She said, thank, thank you, town. Okay. Have a comment. What do you have, Andy? Okay. Close up a comment, bring it back to the board, Liam, and you go.
Um, I did have one item, but I think we'll table it until next week. Um, I was struggling with wording for the stipends and how to put it into the personnel plan. So I was, I reached out to Chris for, uh, recommend, recommended language, and I also wanted to also, um, broaden this, the board's awareness that there are two stipends for his department as well, that I could not find worded in the personnel plan, so that may mean something, this is something that we should be addressing.
Hey Dave, um, the police department happened internally, it appears that they've been given stipends to positions of responsibility. And this did not, there's no apparent, um, approval by the board selection, and.
It did come to the board before they started that, like.
Okay, was it before my time?
Well, I know they presented it every budget.
They presented it every budget, but was it ever officially approved, that's the question.
Well, I know they did come, like, to us, um, and there was some discussion about it, and, um, we did decide that, um.
The thing is, if, if it was decided, you know, it has some merit, but the thing is, I think what we wanna do is codify it, so it's at least documented in the personal plan, along with the other stipends which we have there. For example, we have the, uh, the town garages for the winter maintenance, we codify that stipend. And the stipends for the welfare director and etcetera, and I think Liam's trying to work with, uh, the chief to get some language in our personnel plan, so when we, we publish it, we can have that.
Yeah, we need to provide language, and I read it, seemed, seemed a bit to it.
Yeah, so, so I think it, it's work in progress, I think by next week, we should have a, some final wording on that.
And hopefully we'll get some wording.
And so, just so you guys understand that, like, what I understand is when there's officers on duty, and, uh, something heavy comes up, like a death in an accident, or whatever, they need to call a superior officer, um, basically, Brian is on call all the time now for that position. Uh, there was originally two officers that had it, and they switched off through the year, they each had a thousand dollars, and because Brian sort it full-time now, they bumped it to the two thousand.
Correct, correct. And there's, there's also the thing that we're gonna have the discussion with, uh, we're gonna have to discuss, um, uh, if you could call him, he's in a recruiting mold right now for an officer.
Yeah.
And there was some discussion whether we should have.
Well, he is, he was, he's requesting a meeting with the board next week.
Yeah, we'll discuss how we may incentivize, non-incentivize, and, uh, stuff like that, so he'll be to talk in non-public next week regarding that.
Yeah.
Let's tell you, um.
My pockets, my pockets getting empty.
They're proactive, but I've never seen a, a different position where there's so many different ways to make money.
Hey, we gotta get a, huh, that's all I have to say, no. That's a little humor for those listening. Now, the thing is, um, uh, I like it when the town gets their cut on details, I don't mind that, because we get, uh, we get to offset some of the cost of the police vehicles, but, um, I like to have him come and explain what he wants, what's up his sleeve, and how he wants to use some of his current budget, which I thought was kinda tight to start with. And so, uh, that's to be determined next week, I don't wanna second guess anybody right now. Okay, Justin, you happy with that?
Yeah.
Agreed? Anything else, Liam, same with you?
Yeah, that's it.
Justin, to you.
I'll, I'll put this way.
Okay, uh, again, this, this was a special meeting, because we wanted to knock out the election stuff, we did that. Dave, hopefully you are, do feel better, you can be there Tuesday, Monday at four o'clock, Justin, Monday at four o'clock if you can.
Yeah.
And, uh, I have nothing else for.
Does Dave have anything?
Dave, well, I'm gonna get to it, Dave, do you have anything else?
I do.
You do?
Yeah.
All right.
I wouldn't, all too early.
I wanted you to join the meeting. Go ahead.
I have been watching one thing.
Okay.
The, um, town hall restoration, and he has been putting off their meetings only because they haven't had a lot to discuss.
Okay.
Um, I've been kinda watching what they were gonna provide for that second floor, that was supposed to be a work in progress, and I don't hear much, uh, feedback on it.
In other words, that, some of the, uh, interior detail work, correct, is what we're referring to?
No, we're gonna be having a few more updates between you and I and the board there on that. But one thing we didn't accept, uh, there were three extra proposals, we accepted two of the three. One was, um, he worked to do the air handler, we accepted that, did that under Chacoine's contract, and then we did the walkways, because that was a requirement, that was five thousand.
Yeah.
And there was a small one of two thousand, we didn't accept from Chacoine since. And there was a small one of two thousand, we didn't accept from Chacoine to do the um handicap Lulu to go to the stage. And they, they, they offered that to us for two thousand dollars. And I'm thinking we should have taken it, because if these guys drop the ball and don't do it, then, what was talked about is somebody had one of those in their home or whatever, and they were gonna use it up there. But in looking at the plans and what was required, they were going to that area to go up on the stages, too small for the door needed to be removed from there. And then there needs to be some stage work done, because the size of where that Lulu would go is not the right size. And then they were gonna use their existing Lulu there. Well, for two thousand dollars, we would have done all that, we would not have to worry about that as a town at all, so I'm gonna reach out to them and see what their plans are on that, because what I don't want is to have the building all done and then not have that handicap support for the stage up there.
He, I, 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 I agree with you somewhat, but I look at this as more meeting space rather than a stage space. Um, and so I would look, I would, I would not want to take out of town findings, if it's donated, it's fine. And I would ask them if they want, it's now's the time to step on the plate to save dollars, I can see that, but.
It's very small amount of money as well, I'm thinking two, we'll never get that done for two thousand dollars ever again, I can tell you that.
I, I would say, I like to keep it on as an agenda item for next week, so we can discuss it further.
Yeah, what I'll do, like, is I'll reach out to see what their plans are with it, they're gonna, if they're gonna react or start working on it or what, because they haven't done.
No, they, they recommended, like, remember stage lighting and all sorts of stuff, they were gonna add, stage curtains, as I recall?
Yeah, and what I thought is, is they're gonna do all that, that type of fancy stuff, but they're gonna skip this part that's essential, because you cannot play that without offering assets for everybody, you know, that's why we did the whole addition of the building.
Right, right, but that, remember, I'm gonna be the devil's advocate here. Uh, the mission of the building was to have meeting space, not necessarily stage space. Stage was a secondary item. Uh, to me, I'm not going up there to have plays, I'm looking forward to having meetings from various town groups across town. And I thought that was the principal reason we pursued this renovation. Go ahead, I got a, a member of the public, a town official wants to comment.
Um, just a thought, Linda Landry, just a thought. I know it will, you know, we have the stage and the thing for the meeting space. Just picture down the road, a very large meeting, where you have to have the board or the committee people on a stage and elevated and addressing an assembly.
Point taken.
Um, just looking into the future.
So, there may be, there's some merit there, so, and let's, let's leave it on the discussion, and I think as we've been striking now, why it's still hot, or.
Like, I didn't want, I didn't want to have our contact close out with Chacoine, because they're not gonna come back in for that two thousand dollars, I know that, but.
Why they're there may be an opportunity, okay, I, I'd say let's.
It's pretty minimal cost, to be honest with you. What he's saying, I, I don't think they're gonna come back ever, ever for that minimal cost, I see it from both sides, but.
At the same time, though, the thing is, my maintenance line, our maintenance line is dwindling.
Understandable.
And the thing is, uh, I think it's, at this rate, we have no extra funds to, to apply to his tax rate this year. Um, we have major costs in, just on the doorstep, on the horizon, we're talking about pay raises, we're talking about inflation. I think it's, uh, I'm being a little more conservative with the dollars, and so, I hear you, so I don't want to take it off the table, but it's two thousand dollars, does sound cheap, but, you know, I got electrical work, which I, I didn't think was gonna go in the ground, but now it's gotta go in the ground, we know that, but. Um, Dave, I don't want to take it off the table, let's discuss it again.
And my understanding.
That's why I didn't, that's why I wanted to bring it up, because it's something in the future, I'm gonna talk to them. You know, I don't, I've been on that board for like three and a half years, I don't even know who supposedly has it, who's gonna install it, I mean.
Are you referring to the theater or the town hall restoration group?
Yeah, well, somebody in that group has one, but, you know, it's gonna be in the right height, it's gonna stop at the right height, it's gonna be the right size, I mean.
No, I know, the thing is, if it's done, it's gonna be done professionally correctly, to meet safety, with codes.
Yeah, so I'm gonna try and get that figured out amongst them, and then have them uh come back to us and let us know their findings, then we can.
All right, I'll concur with that.
I don't want it to be something that we don't do, and it costs that four thousand dollars down the road instead of two.
True, but remember, my wallet's getting thin. Go ahead, Linda, again.
Linda Landry just wanted to add that in, um, Dave and Justin are both right, both selectments now are correct. And that I think that price wise, it's a pretty good price, and I understand, like, where you're coming from, because I got the same wallet you do. But what will a lawsuit cost us if we're not fully ADA accessible when we need to be?
By.
If we exceed that two.
But the thing is, it's, it's where, how the utilization room is gonna be used, I think it's stage, vice, uh, meeting space.
Like I said, we just wouldn't use that portion of the room if that.
If that happened, yeah.
Because we are meeting the ADA compliant by putting the additional.
Right, yeah. Okay, uh, let's uh table that discussion, keep it on board, but the thing is, I'm a little bit conservative on that, and, but the thing is, I'm not gonna say no, I'm not gonna say yes, I'm just gonna say I'll, I'll listen to. I like to see some lovely donations come in, like was, some of the promises we got.
Yeah, and I, and that's something they can definitely work on as well, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up.
Okay, thank you, Dave, anything else?
Pushing to adjourn.
No, you can't, you can't do it, Dave, you're not here.
Justin? I make a motion to adjourn at, oh, it's only six, six fifty-six.
Oh, yeah.
Six fifty-six. That's my seven one.
So, Dave.
Six fifty-six.
Thank you, David. Say again, Dave.
Have a good night, thank you, guys.
Okay, bye-bye.
Justin made a motion.
Your second one?
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, all set.